Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall and to City Council. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Wednesday, November 21st. Here is 2001. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. You're more than welcome to visit us here at City Hall, or you can also watch us live from home on your cable station, Channel 35, via webcast from the city's homepage, or listen in via council phone. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
President Glandre, Garcia, Han, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Vice, Zion, and Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If I would ask everybody to please rise and call on Councilmember Labange along with some very special guests to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I have the great fortune of having my daughter, Mary Catherine, here today. From Ivanhoe School in Silver Lake where they're off today, so she's doing the day in government to learn about what her dad does, and she's going to lead us in the pledge.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Kay. Before beginning with today's agenda, the chair recognizes Ms. Perry for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to give special recognition to the three visitors we have in the council chamber today, from Troop 20, from Boy Scouts of America, and they're doing their government affairs portion of a very special project. Terrence Huntoun and Robert Greer...Robert, just Robert. And then Dylan King are here today touring the facility, looking on, understanding the history of City Hall and how the city works, so I'd just like for them to stand up so we can say hello and greet them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Holden seconds.
Commendatory resolution for approval?
Mr. Zion moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be addressed. Item number 19, a request from the city attorney to this matter be referred back to the city attorney's office.
Members, item number 19, without objection, referred back to the city attorney's office.
Items numbers one and two on the regular agenda are items noticed for public hearing.
Items one and two before us calling, they do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on items one or two? Mr. Holden calls item two special.
Mr. President, would you wish to hold the ordinances on number one until you have 12 members? Let's do that. Next on the agenda would be items numbers three through eight, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items three through eight, public hearings haven't held, members, any specials? Mr. Zion?
President, I'd like to receive and file item number seven.
Members, request to receive and file item number seven? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item number seven is received and filed. Any specials, items three through six or number eight? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Items three through eight are approved. Next item, please.
Items, members nine through 18, on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held.
Public hearings have not been held, and items number nine through 18, I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. Any specials? Members, items nine through 18. Mr. Labange calls 13 special. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item number 20 on the continuation agenda is an item for which is noticed for public hearing.
Item number 20 now before us, do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. Members wishing to speak on item 20, Mr. Reyes.
Council President, members, I just rise to one thing. CRA, their work in putting this project together, and thank the Pico Union Housing Corporation. They've hung in there over the years, making this project a reality. It's a great facility, it's childcare, strategically located across the street from grammar school, and it's going to be a very comprehensive approach to dealing with some of the pressures of Pico Union. So again, just want to thank you, and thank the departments for all the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item 20. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item 20 is approved. Next item, please.
Items numbers 21 and 22 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items 21 and 22 before us, let's call 22 special. Members wishing to be heard on item 21? Mr. Holden calls 21 special. Both 21 and 22 called special. Next item, please.
Item number one is back before you, and it is an ordinance, and you now have 12 members.
Members wishing to be heard on item number one? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item one is approved.
Item number two called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, waiting for one of my staff people to come down and provide some additional information, unless there's someone in the audience from zoning administrator, we should hold on. There he is, okay, will you come forward, please? The planning committee made some modifications to your recommendation. Explain why and whether or not it's justified, and whether or not we should stay the course as recommended by the commission.
Good morning. Laura Screen, zoning administration, standing in for the zoning administrator, was not able to be here, another one. There were two conditions that were modified by the planning committee, and those were the hours of operation number four. The original hours were 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the committee modified them from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. And the other condition that was deleted was condition number five, which was the retention of a security guard on duty, and that condition was deleted. And there was no opposition from the community, and this seemed to satisfy all parties.
The zoning administrator, how do they feel about those recommended changes?
The zoning administrator recommends the commissions...
As recommended by the planning committee?
Planning committee, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. You're not done yet, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, councilmembers. As Chair of Plumb, we did review this project. We did have support from CD10 representatives there, and it looks like we reached an agreement in terms of the conditions that they're willing to settle with, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item number two is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 called special by Councilmember Labange. Mr. Labange? Item 13.
Yeah, I just want to correct it if it's good, Mr. President. It's $2,500 for Ivanhoe School for their community beautification landscaping project, not $25,000. The motion says $2,500, but the agenda had that other direction. Thank you.
Okay, technical clarification. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item 13 as clarified. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 21 called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden? Item number 21.
President, members, we have this matter before us, proven resolution which provides for an increase in term limits, three terms, and we...that include all elected officials. And what I was hoping that we were seeking is an impression from the city attorney's office, and also from the city controllers, they...I would hate to have it go this way, and then they later come out and say we're opposed to it. That could cause a lot of embarrassment. Do you have any feeling at all, impression about where the city attorney and city controllers coming in on this?
We do not, but the matter that you have before you and the documents that you have before you, the charter amendment would be consistent with the action which you took yesterday, which would include all elected officials in three-year term...I'm sorry, a three-term limit. As to partial terms, they would be treated the same as they are now under the charter. They would count if there was a half term or more to go whenever a member is appointed or elected, and they would apply, the limitations would apply retroactively and prospectively, both for life, whenever a term was served, and the terms would not have to be consecutive. So that, all is consistent with the instructions that we received from you yesterday.
Kay, it's just unfortunate that we didn't get an opportunity to at least seek their concern regarding this. They're politicians, and if they, at some later date, decide they want to be antagonistic toward what we're doing, it can cause a lot of embarrassment. I suspect that might even be the case, for their own interests, one could say, well, I'm against it, and then come out after we put it on the ballot, and that could happen. Have you heard anything like that at all?
I have no such information.
Well, I guess my position on this issue is very, very clear. Of course, something is better than nothing, it's your fate, not mine. You just get one opportunity in life sometimes, and what you use or do is choose the best. That's always been my practice, and you just, through my life experiences, I realize that you can only go to the well once, and once it's dry, if you go, there's nothing that you can obtain. It satisfies your thirst. It was my feeling, of course, and I'll repeat it again, that if we're going to go to the well, good timing, that those voters would have been positively responding to what we wanted, except for the fact that I would like to...I would have been concerned about, still am, what the other two elected officials citywide are thinking on this subject matter. Because if we trip, they would be the ones to do it, and if we fall, they would be the ones who cause it. So, President, members, I guess something is better than nothing, but I think it would be really fair to give the voters an opportunity to choose. If I were going to write an argument against what we're doing today, I would say just that, that for us to just give them yes or no on an additional term, in my view, would not be giving them the right to choose, the right to choose, and it's really speaking for them.
I will say that like any other ordinance, the ordinance that's before you, along with the resolutions, does go to the mayor for his consideration and veto or approval.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, the matters before us, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
All right, inasmuch as there are not 12 members here, although the matter was unanimous, it needs to go over for one week, so that will be the order.
That would be just the ordinance, the rest are approved.
Okay, next order?
Item number 22 called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would hold my time, and I'd ask the CLA and/or CAO and representatives of the department to come forward and give us a report or update on what we've done since yesterday?
Can we have a report, please?
Can we have a report, please?
President, members of the council, my staff, CEO staff, engineering, wrecking parks, et cetera, have been working since yesterday to, I guess since Wednesday, or since yesterday. Actually, today is Wednesday. The, on trying to establish exactly what are the projects that are in jeopardy, where they are in the process, what we can do to speed them up. There appears to be a whole range of both reasons for them not to be further than they are, and ways that we can hopefully resolve these. We're preparing a motion right now to have the council authorize the general manager to accept and enter in any grant agreement that is permissible. We think that, although I think for the most part, the general managers have that authorization right now, I think we need a little more time to-- some of these have environmental issues, they haven't been submitted, the applications haven't been submitted because of that, there's just a-- we have, I have four pages of projects here that are at risk, and the reasons vary across the board on why. There are a couple meetings going on right now, trying to establish exactly what we can do and how quickly we can do it. I would suggest that if we get the motion passed, and you continue this to Tuesday, and quite frankly, I would continue it on a daily basis until we have the answers to all the projects, and can try to backstop this situation as quickly as possible.
You said, if we can get the motion passed and continue this until Tuesday, and every council meeting until this is completed, first of all, which motion, doing what? A or B?
Here it is. B, do we have an inventory, a anonymization of the number of projects, the dollar figure on each project, what the cumulative total is? C, what can be done in the immediate to try to salvage not only these projects, but the state funding component of these projects? And D, have we begun to discuss the systemic issues within the department that helped put us in this situation, whether it was the application hadn't been drafted and submitted to the states, or the compliance with the environmental step in completing that application? Two things. One, I think that we are, we have a list, I don't think it's, I'm not totally confident that it's complete. We will pursue that again over the next couple days. We are identifying, as best we can, what are the problems in each of these projects, and why they happen, as it relates to some overall problem or difficulty, I think we should, actually, the CAO and the CLA have a report coming forth shortly to, I think, address that as it relates to Trump-Kay, and some other items as well. I think we'll incorporate that kind of issue in that, in that format, if that's, if, I think that would be the appropriate way to do this. I think right now, all of us need to concentrate on looking at project by project, and identify what we can do, as you say, to salvage and make sure we don't lose these monies. And I think it's going to take my office, and the CEO's office, and wrecking parks, and engineering, et cetera, and the city attorney to sit down and do everything we possibly can over the next few days to, to correct the situation.
Okay. Reaching in, can you clarify what the motion does, since we're going to take a vote on it soon?
Let me read it.
And while you're doing that, let me just note, colleagues, looking at what I believe is only a partial list, the list of projects adds up, again, a partial list already, to three and a half, four million dollars worth of recreation and parks projects.
Basically, there, the, I'll read, one is instruct and authorize all affected city departments, including Department of Recreation and Parks, and Bureau of Engineering, to negotiate and execute agreements necessary to implement the projects that we're identifying. Two, instruct the Department of Recreation and Parks with the assistance of engineering to prepare all the necessary environmental documents that are yet to be completed, and then request all city council offices to review the status of the projects within their jurisdiction to make, to assist us in any way they can to make sure that we get these expedited as quickly as possible. I think that's all we can do today.
You're recommending adoption of the motion and continuing consideration of the refugee matter until Tuesday, which colleagues, I would ask for your support in, and really encourage the CLA, CAO, and the department in your next report next Tuesday, to be ready to address the long-term systemic issues of the department. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Seeing no one else to speak, we have a motion before us, as well as a recommendation that we continue the matter after we act on the motion to next Tuesday, to get more detailed reports from the Recreation Parks Department and other departments in the city that may be also affected by the potential of some of these cuts, as well as the ability to expedite the programs. So the matter is before us, is a motion. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that matter is approved, and the substance of the matter is continued also until Tuesday after further report. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Now's time for public comment on agenda items.
I don't believe we have any public comment cards received today. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak to the council? Seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Mr. Clerk?
Motions are posted and referred. Requests from excuse from council attendance, Councilmember Galanter requests for excuse on November 30th for city business, this meets policy.
The excuse is approved?
The desk is clear.
Okay, we don't have an executive session? That was continued?
Item number 19 was continued, yes. Or actually, it was referred back to the city attorney.
Okay, members of the council, the desk is clear, are there adjourning motions today? Would everyone please stand?
Thank you, Madam Chair, playing musical chairs. Just an announcement to the entire city, especially the city family, please have a safe and adorable Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Ms. Labange?
Yes, tragically, there was a, last weekend, a plane crashed Santa Monica Airport, to claim the life of Richard Runyon, and also Kathleen Vance. Mr. Runyon was a very creative designer, designed many things, and was a very good friend of Richard Reardon, and I request the council adjourn in the memory of both Richard Runyon and Kathleen Vance for that tragic accident.
Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I think that all of us probably, particularly this year, are thinking about what we're grateful for this Thanksgiving, and I'm sure that my colleagues would join me in indicating that all of our thoughts this year are with the thousands and thousands of families throughout this country who will not be with a loved one this year, because their loved ones were in the attacks on our country on September 11th. Among those who will be without a loved one this year, among them is my constituent Terry Mullin, who lost his son Steve, who was a broker on the 104th floor, worked for Cantor Fitzgerald and the World Trade Center. I'd asked that the council, and I'd asked all members, join me in adjourning in memory of Terry Mullin's son, Steve, and I'd also asked that everyone join me in recognizing the tremendous loss that so many fellow Americans will feel tomorrow around their Thanksgiving table.
Will all members on that resolution? And Mr. Zion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A German in honor of memory of Herb Cohen. Herb was a volunteer at Lanark Recreation Center for over 15 years. He was a unique, active individual. He was a teacher, instructor, and employer, a mentor to some, but most of all, Herb was a valued person in the hearts of youngsters at Lanark Recreation Center. Through Herb, many children embraced the love of T-ball and baseball. He contributed to the KYDS program, an active member of the park advisory board, and most of all, a fine talent for fundraising. Herb's passing is truly sadness, the staff and those who have been blessed by his presence and wisdom at the park, and he leaves his wife, Mrs. Pauline Cohen, from Canoga Park with the rest of the place.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll. The council is adjourned.